Granicus is rolling.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, we live.
Thank you for that. So today is March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the time is seven oh six P M. I'm calling to order the Ballpark City Council Virtual Regular Meeting. And then we have Marie. Marie, did you want to do an invocation for us today? She might be muted. Okay. While she unmutes herself. Chief, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I think you're on mute.
Okay. Would everybody please stand and face flag? Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. City Clerk, can I have your roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor pro temp Daniel Damian.
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here.
And City Treasurer Marie Contreras.
Here.
Here.
Marie, did you want to lead us in an invocation?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Dear Lord, we ask for your help to enlighten our council and our mayor with the right decisions that they need to be made tonight. Please take care of our officers as they travel through the streets. Bless our residents. For this we pray. Amen.
Thank you, City Treasurer.
You're welcome.
And then we haven't adjourned closed session, but city attorneys or anything to report out?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So since we have not adjourned closed session, we're not going to report out at this time unless you prefer it.
Well, that's fine. We will report out when we come back. Thank you. And then an announcement, the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. And we have proclamations, commendations, and presentations, and we have a San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust updates and accomplishments.
Mayor Estrada, Marissa Crater and myself are here. We just need to be promoted. Thank you.
Okay. I can see. Marissa is here.
I don't think I, can you hear me?
You can hear me.
Okay, I'm in a very strange mode, so I can't really see anything, but I'll do my best. So thank you all for giving us an opportunity to, oh, I just got, hold on one second. Okay, I'm back and I can see. This is a lot better. Thank you so much.
Well, are you able to see?
I can see now. I couldn't see anything before, but I can see now. Thank you so much.
What about Brio?
Yes, I think you.
I can.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present, and we want to just use this opportunity to give a quick update on all of the wonderful work that the city has been doing in partnership with the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. Before I start our presentation, I did want to share and normally give a shout out to our key staff that we work with at each city. But there were literally so many staff people at Baldwin Park that we work with that I was like, I would just spend my entire time doing it. But you all are so amazing and so great to work with. We work with basically every department on all the different projects that we've been doing here. Also, I did want to, I wanted to do that acknowledgement before I started. If you can go to the next slide, as a bit of background, the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust is a joint powers authority formed by S B seven fifty-one to fund and finance the construction of affordable and homeless housing. We're able to receive both public and private financing, and we have twenty-two cities, including the wonderful city of Baldwin Park. And the next slide shows our Board of Directors, and I want to acknowledge you see in the blue box. Carol Everall is our, one of our two housing experts. We have regional representation from various council members throughout the San Gabriel Valley, and then we have two housing experts. One is Carol. And I do also want to note that your mayor is the alternate for one of the districts, and he has been wonderful enough to attend one of our meetings when our delegate was unable to attend. Go to the next slide. You can see some of the funding that we've had. So we've been extremely fortunate to receive a twenty million dollar earmark again from Senator Rubio. And we got that in September of two thousand twenty-one. Our board approved a funding plan to fund three major programs. The first is the pipeline to fund our existing pipeline of projects. We put eight million dollars towards that. We're also developing a revolving loan fund, and we put eight million dollars towards that. And then very close to Baldwin Park's heart is the homeless housing pilot program, and that is four million dollars. Additionally, we have been incredibly successful, and I'm very proud that we applied for two different rounds of the local housing trust fund or L H T F grant program. It's a competitive state grant program that matches one-to-one funding for affordable housing projects. So in round one, two thousand twenty, we submitted a million dollars for two projects in Karma and Pomona totaling seventy-one units and rewarded a million dollars. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we submitted a slightly larger request for one point one million dollars in the cities of Pomona and Alhambra for a hundred and seventy-five units. And we received that as well. So we're really proud of that. And if you go to the next slide, this is our pipeline. This is, this slide brings me so much joy to look at. So we have been able to, I apologize that my dog is barking and my daughter is trying to quiet him. So we have a total of ten projects that we have been able to fund, and that has just been so incredible. If you look right in the middle of the slide, you will see the city of Baldwin Park listed there, a little shining star, fifty-three units for the Vista Del Monte project. The trust awarded five hundred thousand dollars to that project. We have, in two years, we just had our two-year birthday last month. We have funded five hundred and fifty-two units of affordable housing in the San Gabriel Valley, which I just find shocking and so incredible, and we have awarded a total of eleven point seven million dollars. Something that's really cool is that our average per unit investment is twenty-one thousand dollars. As you probably know, the cost for affordable housing units range between five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars. So we've been able to leverage our funding for every dollar that the trust has invested, resulted in twenty-two dollars in other sources of funding. So we're incredibly proud of that. If you go to the next slide, you will see a lovely photo as I are rendering. As I mentioned, the Vista Del Monte project, fifty-three units of affordable housing. So we are very excited for that project to be moved forward, and we want to acknowledge the city of Baldwin Park's leadership in being one of our many cities that is doing affordable housing projects. So that is very exciting. I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of the other programs now. As I mentioned, something new that we're doing is we're establishing a revolving loan fund. We just got some consultants on board to help us establish the revolving loan fund. And what this came out of the need that cities had identified through our strategic plan process, the need for access to short-term capital for pre-development and construction loans. So we are really excited about setting this up. We allocated eight million dollars, as I said, from the state earmark. What's really awesome about this is obviously it's short-term loans. So the revolving loan fund will be able to continue in perpetuity, unlike the one-time grants that were able to give to other projects, the loans will pay back and will be able to continue to fund projects on an ongoing basis. Our first step is to hold stakeholder forums, so that's meetings with all of the cities that are member agencies to form the R L F guidelines to make sure that the loan product that we're developing is responsive to the needs of the cities. The first round of projects must close by May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So if this has piqued your interest and there's something you all are thinking about, be sure to contact Brielle, and I forgot to mention, I want to give a huge shout out to Brielle. I was going to do that at the end, but you all know Brielle. So if you're interested in, you think you might have a project that would be a fit, please contact Brielle on that. And then this is where it gets really exciting for city of Baldwin Park. If you go to the next slide, we've been talking about our homeless housing projects. As you all know, we have really celebrated Baldwin Park Esperanza Villa. We were so proud for that to open the Sunday or the Saturday before Thanksgiving. That has been a great example of what can be done in a city to take action related to homelessness, so that is twenty-five units of homeless housing and the news that I was going to share tonight, and I want to, I'm going to read it so that I don't make a mistake. But one surprising fact is that the majority of the residents are actually seniors. And I think that there was an expectation that these would be younger individuals experiencing homelessness, but we have about two-thirds are seniors. So our exciting news was that we had our first resident get moved to permanent housing. So the woman is a seventy-six-year-old Latina woman that reported that she had been homeless on and off since two thousand and fourteen. She was enrolled in our program on November twenty-second, twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and was with us for three months. Staff at the site remember her as being a sweet lady with an infectious smile. She received meals, showers, case management, and linkage to housing services. They were able to match her with the C E S Recovery Rehousing Program, which supported her move into senior housing. We're thankful for the team at B O L A, Volunteers America, who did that, but that was just made my day when we got that information, and that is the very real impact. We can give you all the numbers in the world, but the fact that we were able to get a seventy-six-year-old senior house into permanent housing, I don't know what better feeling you can have than that. So we were just so happy with that news. But we're not stopping there. As you know, Baldwin Park is one of my superstar cities. So we have a pilot, housing pilot program. And in addition to Esperanza, we are working with you, if you go to the next slide, to develop, and I always have trouble picking my favorite project, but I love this project. To do the project for homeless families, you all are sure are very familiar with this, but our program provides maximum funding of twenty-five thousand dollars per bed, per unit for sites that would be operated for two years or more, and the funds need to be expended by May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Baldwin Park received one point two five million dollars in December, and this is for an adaptive reuse project in about fifty beds of homeless housing. So we are again very excited. This is so cool. I was hoping to have a project that was an adaptive reuse one, so we are really looking forward to working with you all on that. I'm almost done. Two more slides. So housing planning. So we realized there was a need to help cities that aren't as advanced as the city of Baldwin Park in doing all of these different types of projects. So on the next slide, we are leveraging funding that we are getting through the REAP, Regional Early Action Plan Program to do a lot of activities to support the development of affordable housing. So we're doing a surplus land inventory to identify both publicly and privately owned sites that could be developed into affordable indoor homeless housing, and then that will be created into a webpage. We are studying the feasibility of a land trust. As you all know, we have a construction authority, and anyone that does any public entity that develops transportation projects is subject to a surplus land trust. And one of the challenges is you may want to hold that land for affordable housing, but there might not be a site ready. So the idea of a land trust would be able to purchase land when it's available and then hold it until it's ready to be developed. So we're looking at the feasibility of either the housing trust developing the regional land trust or having a different nonprofit implement the land trust, but we're really excited about that. And last but not least, we are launching an affordable housing incubator, and what that is, is a suite of technical assistance and consultants to help cities in all of the different areas that we were identified as needing to help support the development of affordable housing. So we have financial analysis and technical support, real estate and land acquisition, land use and environmental analysis, public outreach and engagement, and grant writing. So we are excited about that to be starting in the next month or two. So at the end, I'm on my last slide. Again, I just really want to thank you and celebrate you. I forgot this, this slide just shows kind of all the different stages of the ways that we're trying to help. We're trying to help you from the very beginning step to the actual pipeline funding to construct the project. So from the planning to the construction, we've worked on all these different pieces to really build out the trust into something that can help cities do everything that they want in terms of developing affordable housing. So we are just incredibly proud and excited about that. So last slide is just if there's any questions, and I did want to acknowledge Brielle Azavito, who is our Regional Housing Trust Administrator, and she does so much wonderful work that if she can wave, I don't know if she is, hi Brielle. She's just incredible, and I wanted to acknowledge all of her wonderful work, and that is the end of my presentation.
Great. Well, thank you for being with us today. You know, it's very exciting to hear about all this stuff, and I'm glad that you presented this stuff. The tiny homes have been, you know, a big, I'm very fond of them, you know. It's a great project. We really have set, you know, we've really set the example here, not just in the San Gabriel Valley, but in the region, right? And anybody who's paying attention knows that I've heard, you know, we're still, we're still receiving visitors. I just found out, I think Paramount and Hawthorne wants to check it out, and I think the mayor from Paramount wants to come as well. So that's really neat. I heard even, I might have heard Malibu came recently. So these big cities are coming to Baldwin Park to see what we're doing. And I think Manny is going to announce something. Manny, do you want to tell everybody about the tiny homes and what's going to happen?
Sure, Mayor. It'd be my pleasure. California Parks and Recreation Society, known as C P R S, San Gabriel Valley Region, which is also known as C P R S District thirteen, has selected Esperanza Villa as a model project. So we are considered one of the best of the best projects, and we will be recognized at the end of the month at the Diamond Bar Center, and we are very proud to receive this award. I believe this is a validation of all of staff's hard work and the leadership provided by the city council, mayor, and everyone else. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. So, you know, that was a neat thing I found out today, so I want to make sure Manny got to share it. But I'm glad you shared that information, right? Because sometimes there is misleading narratives regarding this bronze of the land, what it does. If you go in there, you see that you're right. It is fifty to sixty percent of seniors. You know, I was, you know, we're waiting on somewhere, I think somewhere in the, or in the application process where they're filling out their applications and getting ready to move out. So it's really neat to see that, you know, experience it and show the community as well. I've been taking people out there and I kind of show them so that they see, you know. And so I'm excited about it. I'm excited about phase two, which is our, making sure families don't go homeless and making sure that they have safe space instead of a, you know, jumping from motel to motel with motel vouchers and not having a safe place to interact or even do their homework, right? So thank you for that. I did want to throw out, you know, we have a great partnership with the Regional Housing Trust. One thing I would like to see is a maybe a funding group for affordable homeownership, something that the city has really worked heavily on, and finding a funding partner would be really nice, something that we can potentially explore sometime. So thank you for being here, and Brielle, of course, who has been, has been part of the process since day one and has helped make it happen. And of course, staff, Eurico, Manny, and our public work. So I'm very, I'm very proud of the synergy that both agencies have been able to come by.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Avila.
Thank you. I also want to thank everybody involved. I remember when Eurico started talking about what we can do with the homeless. She was so, so excited. I didn't know you could take it this far, Eurico. So thanks for being instrumental in being part of helping us put all these programs together and bringing the right staff in that's so motivated to make it happen as well. Thank all of the staff that has pushed forward, and tiny homes is a great example of what can be done to help those that unfortunately are not fortunate like the way we are. So I'm thankful for that. Thankful for Eurico pushing the program forward along with Manny and all of the staff. Brielle, you have been amazing in this program, so thank you. And I definitely look forward to our next project on Garbi. I can't wait to, to see the families there, open the project, and then transition them to permanent housing. So thank you, everybody that has been involved. Thank you, Councilmember Avila.
Any other council members? If not, I want to thank you guys one more time for being here. Like I said, we're very excited. I'm glad you shared that information. I think it's very important that we share that with the community as well, so that there were what we're doing, now we're answering their concerns. And then Marissa, before you and Brielle leave, I do want to jump to our third proclamation commendation, which is the recognition of our Public Works Engineer Manager, John Boucher, who I heard was stolen by the Regional Housing Trust. And so I think, and so the joke is that, you know, he did so well with your R H T money at the first tiny home site that you decided to take him with you. So I want to highlight John, and technically I'm still part of the cog in the Regional Housing Trust, so we're still kind of in a team, so it's okay. But, you know, we're very proud of John. John has been instrumental in a lot of the projects that we're doing. He was part of the tiny homes, he's part of other projects. So you guys are very, very lucky to have him. And then, you know, John is also a part of Baldwin Park. So John, I want to give you the floor for a little bit.
Oh, good evening, honorable mayor and city council. It's very hard to put words or feelings into words. I'm truly honored to work in this beautiful city of Baldwin Park and serve their community. You know, I want to thank my director, mentor, and friend, Sam Gutierrez, for his guidance and patience with me. I want to thank Ron, Lulu, Anthony Long, and I don't want to forget anyone, you know, our directors and C E O. And of course, you know, I can't forget my public works family. Thanks for your support. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for the directions and support and the true love to the community. You make it happen, and this is the right word. You always make it happen. I will miss working with all of you, and I truly made long, you know, lifelong friends. And thank you for everything, and I will miss you all.
And then so real quick, sorry, John, no pressure, but you know, you got, you got two organizations here. Which was your favorite one?
I love you all.
Well, before I before I hand it off to your Public Works Director, I just want to read, you do have a plaque. I don't know if they've handed it over to you yet. Okay, but you will get one, don't worry. Want to make sure you put it at your, at your new office, just so everybody know where you come from. And so it's John Boucher, Engineering Manager, Public Works Department, December two thousand eighteen, March two thousand twenty-two. In recognition of over three years of service with the city of Baldwin Park, we commend you for the unconditional dedication you have given your colleagues, residents, businesses, and our community. Thank you for all the hard work you committed to many city projects. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. March sixteenth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
And the best thing is your family's still here, so you'll still visit Baldwin Park.
Yes, well, Baldwin Park is my family, so yes, absolutely.
Great, great. Congratulations. We will miss you.
Thank you, thank you. Marissa, I'll speak soon.
You're still part of the Baldwin Park family when you're at the cog. We love all of you.
Absolutely.
Hey, so I just, hey, everyone, this is Sam Gutierrez. So, John, I get the great pleasure to present to you on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, the plaque of which the mayor just read the wonderful words here that we have for you. I just wanted to say a few words. I, as the mayor said, and many people don't know, is that you are, in many ways, a product of the city of Baldwin Park. So I remember when I first met you and we first started working together many years ago, that you immigrated to this country from Egypt, straight to the city of Baldwin Park. And so, you know, with that in mind, I recall when we first offered you the position here. I remember you saying that, you know, you're telling me the story, and I remember you saying that you wanted to give back to the Baldwin Park community. And, and let me tell you, brother, you have done that. You've done that with the numerous projects and the passion that you've brought to, to the projects. We've been able to accomplish a lot. You are an integral part of the team, and we're all very, very sad to see you go. But we are so proud of you and in your next steps. So this is not goodbye. This is just farewell. Thank you for all you have done. As the mayor said, we wish you the best, very best in your future endeavors. But I do want to say that you have been an amazing coworker, but above all else, an even better friend.
Thank you, thank you, Sam. And it's been very emotional, you know, few weeks for me. And like I say, I love you all, and, and, you know, I have lifelong friends that I always cherish. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. John, when I saw your presentation on the agenda, I said, no, we can't lose John. I just want to say thank you for your incredible work here at the city. I feel like everything that you did, you put your best foot forward for the community of Baldwin Park, and that really came through in the presentations that you gave to the council and, you know, in various meetings that we had. And so I just appreciate that you've approached your work with a lot of integrity. And it will be missed, but I do, I do see that you're excited about the next chapter, and I want to wish you all the best. I hope that Baldwin Park has served as a foundation for all the great things that are to come for you. And I look forward to future collaboration in a different role. But I know that you will always have Baldwin Park at a heart, and, you know, the service to this community will carry forward with you. So just wanted to say thank you. Your work is appreciated. You are appreciated, and it is well-recognized. So all the best to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
You're welcome.
Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. John Chapo, congratulations, kudos.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, round of applause for your accomplishments here in our city. There are many that, you know, obviously your colleagues and all of us have certainly witnessed over the years. We're very proud of you, and congrats as you move on into your, you know, the next set of your career and your journey. You know, I'm sure you'll be just as successful or more so, you know, working on behalf of the San Gabriel Valley instead of just one city. So your experiences, your knowledge, your technical expertise will carry you forward without a doubt. And, you know, as everyone said, this is not a goodbye. This is just a farewell, and we will see you around. Because again, as you mentioned, you have family, you have roots here, so we'll be seeing you from time to time, hopefully at our summer concerts, which I know is something that you enjoy, and so perhaps we'll see you in a few months.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hernandez.
Mayor?
It's Councilmember.
I congratulate you again, John. It's really sad to see you go, but it's the best thing for you. I know you have worked really hard to, to be where you're at, and you're moving forward, making sure you continue to, to help not just Baldwin Park now, but you're going to help more communities. But I want you to know that your work ethics is noticeable. It's impressive. Your humbleness, I think your humbleness has a lot to do with your work ethics, and, and that does not go unnoticed. So I appreciate everything you have done for the city of Baldwin Park, and that I know you will continue to do for the city of Baldwin Park. I just want to wish you the best, and hopefully we will see you at the concerts in the park. Best of luck to you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Avila.
Mayor? Yes, Councilmember. I'll just echo what everyone else has said, John. I know it's been a short time that we've been working together, but just want to tell you that number one, we're all pretty sad to see you go. But we're also happy for your next endeavor that you're going to be, you know, working with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. I also want to thank you, John, because I know that your commitment to your work and to our community has, has been great. So those are the things that I noticed in you and your quality, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much for your commitment to our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Damian, and I'm a Baldwin Park product, exactly like Sam said, and you know, I want to show the younger generation that, you know, as Baldwin Park product, that, you know, we have dreams and, you know, we should reach these dreams and, and be an inspiration to others and, and as we get inspired by, by, you know, the councils and, and our mentors. Thank you so much for everything that you, you give us to staff and community. Truly love everyone here, and I really enjoy working with every single person here.
So on behalf, on behalf of the city, Baldwin Park.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Tell Sam not to go back to. I'll send how to go back to his desk. I'm going to run down there.
So.
Thank you, John. Uh, so before before you, before we we move on, do you want to tell everybody, uh, what your first exposure was? Were your food? Where you were first exposed to to, uh?
Would you like, would you like me to say the story?
Go ahead.
All right, I'll keep it short. So when I first moved, I moved here in Baldwin Park and um, my brother was here a year ahead of us and he uh, introduced me and my mom like in the first week here to, um, Taco Ready. And, you know, he bought us, he bought us two burritos, which we were very impressed. And we're like, wow, you know, it was like grateful. We've never tasted burritos before. And then the second day, my mom asked me, hey, let's go to have the same food that we had yesterday. So I went to, um, you know, Taco Ready with my little English at the time and I asked for, I forgot the name of the burrito. So I I asked the cashier, I'm like, hey, uh, can I get like yesterday, the same food as yesterday? Of course she didn't remember what it was. And I think she asked me if it was taco and I agreed to everything she said. She was like, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So she got us two tacos instead of two burritos. And then we saw, we're like, why is it too small? And that's not what we want. But yeah, that was my first experience here in the city, uh, or with, you know, with burritos, so.
Very nice. Well, thank you, John. We're gonna definitely gonna miss you and we're gonna miss hearing that story, so.
I know. Well, now it's on record, it's on YouTube, so.
But it's gone, it's gone full circle because you got to, you came here, you ate Taco Ready and then you went back when when it became the habit. So you kind of saw.
Right, yeah.
So there it is. All right. Well, well, thank you, John.
Thank you.
And the next we have a retirement plaque and recognitions of years of, uh, in years of public ser- uh, and years of service for Sergeant Michael Hemingway. Sergeant Hemingway, um, I don't want to, who has your plaque? Chief, do you have his plaque?
That's right, I do.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to read it and then should I read it first? That I I feel like we're all out of sync, but I'm going to read it first. So Michael Hemingway, Sergeant, Ballpark Police Department, March nineteen ninety-two and then March two thousand twenty-two. In recognition of your outstanding thirty years of service with the city of Baldwin Park, we commend you for the unconditional dedication you have given the police department, colleagues, residents and our community. Thank you for the many duties you performed and for your professionalism in law enforcement. We wish you a happy retirement, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And so congratulations, thirty years, that's a, that's a long, uh, that's along a, you know, that's along a career. So, you know, it's only one of the Yeah, right. But one of the most exciting things is is seeing that our, that, you know, staff stays here for for the long haul and that they they, uh, complete their career here. Um, and then, of course, your career is older than me, so I like, I like pointing that.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, so very nice. And I see you have some colleagues here. You got, uh, Captain Hofford, uh, Lieutenant Hendricks. And then you got your chief. So I don't know if they want to say some a few words for you.
Just just real quick, uh, Mr. Mayor and the council members, thank you much for the for the opportunity to say something about Mike. Uh, ever since I started, you know, Mike has been an integral part of, uh, helping me be successful in what I've done. He's mentored me and he helped me understand and, uh, be be better aware of what what this department is all about. And it's it's a great department. Mike is going to be sorely missed. He is huge in what he's been doing for us in the last, uh, for for me, at least for the last year and a half, especially trying to get us organized despite the fact that we're we're short in the command staff. So he's been an integral part of of our process. We definitely missed. Hopefully I I can get him back. But it's one of those things that he is, he is a huge source for us for our success in the recent times. So my thanks to you, Mike, for thirty years and, you know, and he is our senior sergeant. But if you look on his on his patch, it started that he carried, there's a star, which means a senior sergeant. So that's that's an outstanding uh, recognition to him for being the the senior sergeant of Baldwin Park Police Department. So many, many thanks to you, Mike. Best wishes of continued success in your in your retirement.
Thank you, Chief. And then just to clarify, that's a that's a senior level, not that he's a senior, so.
Correct, correct. Yes, correct.
Chief, may I say a word?
Yes, please.
Um, I I'd just like to give, express my appreciation to Mike for all of his years of dedicated service and, you know, he and I go back thirty years here at this place and I can tell you that he is a true consummate professional who has always had Baldwin Park and its residents at the forefront of of his heart and what and what his work here has always been about. Um, Mike has served as a detective in a variety of assignments. He was once handpicked to serve on a special problem-oriented policing team that we used to have here some years ago. You know, he's worked auto theft cases, he's worked burglary cases. His forte was related to working vice. Um, he worked vice as a detective here in Baldwin Park. He also served as the vice team supervisor for a number of years. Uh, he was also assigned to the L A Impact Task Force, Narcotics Task Force, that serves all of Los Angeles County and ventures into counties outside of Los Angeles during work, too. He served as an acting lieutenant and as an acting commander during our our short personnel shortages in our rank staff here. Um, I can tell you that he is absolutely critical in our ability to, um, to run this police department. And I I'm sort of, um, um, very nervous about the thought of him not being here to assist me anymore. Um, he um, he works directly for the chief and I in administration. And, um, you know, we're almost over this, uh, this personnel shortage hump that we have now. We have some promotions that are going to be coming up very quickly. And Mike has been able to see us almost through to the end of that tunnel. Um, he's not gonna, uh, his retirement date is scheduled before then. But, um, I I just want to say how appreciative I am of his efforts. He's always been dedicated to this place and seeing the success of the police department and the chief. And, uh, he's going to be sorely missed, but, uh, Mike, well deserved, brother. Uh, you made it the full race. And you know, I also want to point out to you one one last thing. Mike could have retired several months ago. Um, as you may be aware, an employee sick time under the CalPur system can be converted into service credit. And, um, he could have used that sick time credit months ago to retire a little bit early. And he chose to forego that and to stay on because he knew how critical his help was to the success of the police department. And, you know, the reason he's choosing to leave now is because he's come to the end of that sick time period. And he's basically donated that sick time back to the city by not taking it. Um, so, you know, Mike would never tell you that himself, but I think that that level of dedication um, um, is worthy of being noted. So again, Mike, thank you for everything. Congratulations and I'll see you on the golf course. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Unless Lieutenant Hendricks has something to say first. Did you?
No, no, just, I mean, obviously Mike's going to be missed. Everything I planned on saying, the captain said, I pulled up his resume. I was ready to list his accomplishments and accolades, but, uh, I would just second echo the sentiment that, uh, he's played a a very critical part in keeping this organization afloat while we've been in these, uh, personnel shortages. So for that, thank you, Mike.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes, um, Councilmember Rina.
Thank you. Well, Sergeant Hemingway, I really don't think that you should be retiring just yet. I think you still have a few years. But it's a decision, I guess, that that you want to make. I want to wish you the best and I want to thank you for all the years of service that you provided to our residents to make sure that their safety came first. So it's greatly appreciated. I've seen you out on the street, out on patrol, and I I like the way you interact with the community. You're awesome. So thank you for everything that you have done for the city of Baldwin Park. You would definitely be missed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good luck. I won't see you on the golf course, though.
Mayor. Yes, uh, Councilmember Damian. Sergeant Hemingway, uh, congratulations on your retirement, thirty years, uh, with our department here in our community. Uh, thank you so much for your commitment, not only to our department, but also to the residents that you served over the thirty years that you were here. You will be missed. I mean, I want to say thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Sergeant. Uh, congratulations on a long established and distinguished career. Uh, I'm sure your golf game will increase, uh, hopefully. Uh, I mean, that's the reason for why we try to retire and try to aim towards lower pars. So congratulations. Uh, thank you for serving and being dedicated to our city and to our residents and to your colleagues. Um, as, uh, Captain Hofford just mentioned, uh, that speaks value. Uh, but it also speaks to the personality and the type of individual that you are. So again, uh, thank you for everything. Uh, enjoy the enjoy the sunsets and enjoy the beers and everything else that comes along with retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Well, Sergeant Hemingway, um, just want to congratulate you on your thirty years of service to the Baldwin Park Police Department and the community of Baldwin Park. If I look back thirty years, that places us at nineteen ninety-two. And, um, it was a different city back then. And if you would allow me to just kind of walk us through, because I I want to acknowledge um, and and really think about your contribution, um, to this community. Uh, in nineteen ninety-two, I remember a friend of mine was shot and killed on Benbow Street. You may have come in around that time. And you may recall that incident and there was a lot of gang activity. Um, Councilmember Damian probably remembers that as well. And so I would say over the next ten years, uh, working, you know, the the narcotics, I'm sure, the gangs. Um, you know, that really came to a lull. And we saw a lot of progress in terms of, um, stability here in the city, which then allowed for, uh, economic development to to come in and flourish in the city. And, um, you know, you're, I'm sure that your contributions along with your colleagues, um, certainly helped to curtail a lot of that activity. And we enjoyed it, you know, for the last decades. Um, so I I do want to just acknowledge that because uh, the Baldwin Park of nineteen ninety-two is so different than, you know, the Baldwin Park that we know now. And the interesting thing is that we are now experiencing, you know, an uptick. Um, so, you know, I just want to say thank you for your contribution. We're going to have to put our heads together to figure out, you know, how we move forward. Um, and we're going to have to really pull from from the best, um, efforts like the the efforts that you gave to this department. And, um, you know, hopefully you have, uh, you know, left a legacy that others can follow in a very positive way, right? And, um, you know, we'll be able to once again curtail that type of activity. But I just want to, and I do recall if if we remember, uh, what where Walmart currently sits along Garvey Avenue, I'm sure that you were very active in your investigations in that corridor, right? Um, and that has really changed dramatically. So I I just want to, I just share all that because those are some of the details that we've lived in this community. And, um, it's important to highlight how we've all contributed. And, you know, clearly that's how you contributed. I don't want to, um, um, not dismiss, but I I definitely want to recognize that, you know, you were part of a police department that helped, um, with with some very challenging issues in our community to make it better for for the residents, uh, for economic development. And so that this council could enjoy, you know, moving it forward. So thank you for your contributions. I hope that you have a wonderful retirement. It's well deserved. Um, I hope you have a lot of fun things planned now. Um, you know, a lot of healing things because I'm sure after serving thirty years on the police department, there will be a lot of, uh, healing and, um, you know, just hopefully a lot of good that comes from your retirement and the coming years. So all all the best to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Well, thank you, Sergeant Hemingway.
Thank you, sir.
You're Sergeant Hemingway. Uh, you know, we are going to miss you. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna have to find other people to peep into the office and say hi to when I'm down PD. But I'm sure I can. I know where Lieutenant Hendricks' office is now, so I'll be in there for now.
That's a good choice.
Yes. And then and then Captain Hofford, maybe every now and then, right? I'll alternate between them, too. So, you know, thank you. And then, of course, thank you for being, uh, you know, a a good person and being, uh, approachable and and just being easy to talk to. I think it makes everything easier for all of us. Uh, it allows for comfort at City Hall. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this moment, uh, I will open Public Communications. Um, city chief deputy city clerk or city clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Mayor, which one? I'm sorry, which one? Sergeant Hemingway, just a few words, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I got caught up in all the speeches. Sergeant Hemingway. You want to give us a few words? Maybe you have a good story, too, about Baldwin Park that you want to share with us.
He has lots.
And I'm going to the record, so.
The reason I applied here is I was an ambulance driver and we were dropping a patient off on the Garvey Strip, which was a strip of motels. Somebody threw a brick at us, so I came back and applied here to be a policeman. We broke our window with a brick and I loved it. So I came back. But no, I took a chance on me thirty years ago and I've been, uh, been real proud and honored. Uh, it's a it's a privilege to have served here for thirty years and I appreciate your guys' support. Thank you.
Now, what about you? Don't have any good food stories like John?
I missed, I missed Taco Ready, I'll tell you that.
All right.
You missed that.
There seems to be a thing with people leaving the city and missing Taco Ready, huh? Okay, we'll note that one. Thank you for sharing that.
Sure.
All right. Um, so, uh, Public Communications is open. Chief Deputy City Clerk or City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
We have three speakers, Mayor. I'm going to defer to the Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you, City Clerk and Mayor. We have, uh, John Rios, Greg Tuttle and Catherine Lozier. I will try, uh, Mr. John Rios first one moment.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Rios. Uh, this is Lulu from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your three minutes to speak. Whenever you start speaking, your time will start.
Okay, give me a favor, Lulu. Uh, gonna have thirty seconds, remind me.
I will, sir, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the things I want to praise is, uh, coenforcement. Hussein, his group, they did, they've been doing a beautiful job right here in the city. They, uh, you know, some that they're following the law for one thing and they're doing, you know, paying care of, uh, outside vendors. And at the same time, I want to praise, uh, uh, the Public Works Department, you know, especially Anthony. I gave him a call in some areas that, uh, they just sold trash or furniture and stuff again. They responded very good, you know. But, you know, most of all, now we can go out and see that, you know, we don't have no more outside vendors, which is beautiful now. The community, they have stopped by and asked what's happening, you know, well, you know, we're following the law now. And I have a friend that's been a money, he gave me hell because we're sending all the truck vendors over there. But other than that, you know, I praise, you know, those two departments, they're doing beautiful. And at the same time, I want my last thirty seconds of my time. I want to have a prayer within all of us for the the people that are in war right now, the the people from over there. You're trained, you know, uh, you know, it's very sad to see all those children and everything. And my last thirty seconds, uh, join me and having a prayer within yourself. Thank you for your time.
You can do your prayer. You still have a minute.
Oh, it's okay. It's okay, Lulu. You know, it's okay. You know, the the, like I said, it's a silent prayer between all of us. And let's hope and pray for that country that's in war against Russia, you know, there, you know. I just hope it doesn't bake up into a big nuclear, uh, you know, war, you know, so. Thank you for everything.
You have thirty seconds right now.
Okay, thank you.
Your time has stopped. Thank you, Mr. Rios.
Thank you.
Been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. Six.
Mayor, that's the third attempt. Would you like me to try again?
Who was that?
Mr. Greg Tuttle.
Do you want to just touch? You want to try Catherine Lozier, and then just try, you can try one more time after that.
Okay, one more.
Hello.
Hi, Catherine. This is Lulu calling from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your three minutes to speak. Hi, whenever you're ready, the time will start.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Mayor presents Councilmember, community partners, and fellow community members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Starting this week, the LA County Library began new and standardized hours of operations across our eighty-five libraries. Baldwin Park Library's hours remain Tuesday through Saturday, but we've now added a second evening. Our full hours are now Tuesdays and Wednesdays, noon to eight PM. Thursdays through Saturdays, ten to six PM. And we're also excited to announce that we've expanded our hours of operations across several of our libraries. Monday hours are available at several libraries, and the closest libraries to Baldwin Park include Charter Oak Library, Live Oak Library, Norwood Library, and Sun Pit Library. And Sunday hours are now available at five locations, including East Los Angeles Library, Caxton to Heights Library, and Rowan Heights Library. Those are the closest to us. And then I wanted to promote a small business workshop that will be taking part in person at the Baldwin Park Library this Saturday, March nineteenth, at ten thirty AM. And this is a program, this is a workshop for those who are interested in starting their own small business. The LA County Office of Small Businesses will provide aspiring entrepreneurs helpful information on the startup process in Los Angeles County. And will include details on the steps it takes to open a business, a general overview of common commonly required permits, licenses, and available resources that are provided for free. Space is very limited, and free registration is required. And then part of our Women's History Month programming, taking place on Tuesday, March twenty-second, at four PM, renowned comic book artist guru Scott Diablo Marcano will discuss the history of female comic book artists and their work and evolution of iconic characters in the changing role of women in the industry, and how to get started in the arts, musical programs, or adults. For more information on any of our programs and services, please visit us on the website at la county library dot org, in person here at the Baldwin Park Library, or give us a call at six two six nine six two six nine four seven. Thank you all for all that you do, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, let me try Mr. Tuttle.
Voice messaging system. Six.
Mayor, he's Navarro.
Okay.
Let me try him now.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Navarro. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your five minutes to speak.
Oh, five minutes?
I'm sorry, three minutes. I'm so sorry, three minutes. Whenever you're ready, your time will start.
Thank you. We're here, Mayor, and Deputy Councilman. I just want to make a comment on that today was the first day that we, the seniors, were able to get back inside the Julia McNeil Senior Center to celebrate our first birthday celebration in two years. I mean, it was nice to have all the seniors come in, and, you know, so happy to come in, no less. They were able to enjoy the dancing, have some eating inside. I mean, it was just so joyful to see everything, all the people. And so I want to give a big thanks to the director there, Irma Garcia. She's been very instrumental as far as keeping the seniors in form and keep them coming in, even though for the past few years, most of the activities have been outside, but today it was really nice. And she's very, and also these new things that she brought in to Ramon's back. It's wonderful what she's been doing for the seniors. So basically, that's it. Very happy that we're back to almost normal. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers.
Great, thank you, Chief Deputy City Clerk. I do want to just acknowledge, I know quota forcing came up, so just in general, I just want to acknowledge our Ron Garcia, who is currently our acting Director of the Community Development, just in case nobody was aware. And of course, a big thank you to Ron, because I know that he's currently wearing two hats, being a city planner and an acting director, but he's holding on the fort. So we just want to show a little bit of gratitude to you for, you know, holding it down. And then Javier, who is one of our, who's one of our regulars at the Senior Center. We, you know, I'm glad to hear that seniors are happy about being inside. I stopped by today. Javier was wearing green hair and a green mustache, so he's very in the mood and very in the spirit, so very nice. But I just wanted to bring up, you know, that I've seen that also, I believe, the excursions are taking place. I believe the seniors just went on a field trip to the Ronald Reagan Library. Is that correct, Manny?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. They enjoyed a trip to the library, Presidential Library. Thank you.
Nice, thank you. So we want to make sure we let the senior citizen community in our city know that there is opportunities for them to get some fresh air and go on excursions with other seniors in the city. And so at this moment, I will close Public Communications. And I believe we are on the consent calendar.
Mayor, can I close on behalf of somebody?
Yes, of course, Councilman Robbie.
Thank you. I want to close on behalf of Richard Gutierrez, Father Mike's father passed away recently. So I want to send my condolences to Father Mike. I know he will be sending information for his father's service as soon as he has that information available. So my deepest condolences to Father Mike, who was an icon here in the city of Baldwin Park, and now he's in La Puente. I also want to send my condolences to the family of Sandy O'Halloran. She was a secretary at Jones Junior High School. She passed away on January seventh. She will greatly be missed. I worked with her for many years. She made a big impact on a lot of people, a lot of families. As a matter of fact, tomorrow are her services, and to show the impact that she's making, there was an email sent from HR letting us all know that if we needed subs for tomorrow, we probably were not going to be able to get subs, because all those subs were being directed to Jones Junior High School, because all of those teachers are attending the services of Sandy O'Halloran. She was a big fan of St. Patrick's Day. Oh, O'Halloran tells you the name why. So we will be celebrating her life tomorrow with everybody wearing green. She will greatly be missed. She was a great coworker, a wonderful, wonderful person, if you ever met her. So my condolences to her as well. And also my condolences to Daniel Ware. He's my coworker. He just lost his father as well. He had the services for him today and also tomorrow. He recently passed away. He part, the services were today, and then he'll be holding his barrier. So my deepest condolences to the Lower family as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Avila. And of course, we want to send our condolences to Father Mike. You know, Father Mike was a big part of our city, and not only part of our city, but, you know, he's a, he's a big part of the region in general. If you talk to, you know, if you talk to anybody in any city, it seems like everybody knows Father Mike, right? And they've all been impacted by him in a positive way, and they always have something positive about him to say. And overall, he's been a great leader, and of course, we want to share our support in this time for him. So at this moment, I will move to the consent calendar. Is there any items Council is looking to pull?
Can I pull item five and six, please?
Five, six. Okay, I'll pull item number nine. So with that being said, I will make a motion to pass items number one through twelve, excluding five, six, and nine. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Great, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Danny Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. So Councilmember Hernandez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring to our attention, there's a thousand-dollar referral fee for our police department, for, you know, hiring or essentially referring someone to essentially be hired onto our, you know, our department. Right now, it's exclusively only for the police department. My recommendation would be to open it up for any city staff member, because I think what that will do for us is expand the recruiting efforts, instead of just from the police department that had an incentive of a thousand dollars from an employee. We could perhaps have Wreckin Parks or Public Works staff that know of folks that could be potential good folks and a good fit for our city. So that would be my recommendation is to add, from, excuse me, from excluding just everyone else from the police department to add all city employees. Any thoughts, feedback?
I, sir, I agree with you. That's a great idea. We will add to the, to the
Perfect. If there's no other feedback, that would be my motion. My motion would be to add and expand the thousand-dollar referral fee from the police department to all city staff.
And then, just to clarify, council's not a part of it, right?
I will, I will second the motion.
And if we could just get a report of the allocation of how much that would increase our expenditure, to get an estimation of what it looks like.
So there is a second and a first. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
And Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And then you have item number six, Councilmember.
Thank you. Chief, I pulled this item just for a couple of clarification. Awesome that you're receiving additional new handheld radios, especially that it's a grant. So there's no direct cost to you necessarily, but, you know, there is sort of the state grant. The question that I have is, are you guys part of the LA RICs interoperability project? I know you're part of this, you know, the smaller JPA here, but is this, is this JPA also in part of the larger interoperability in LA County?
Yes, I believe so. And I'll let Lieutenant Hendricks address that. He's been, he's one that worked diligently on this staff report in order to get us to where we're at, where we're getting a grant. So he has a response to that.
Thank you, Chief. And yes, Councilmember Hernandez, we are a part of the ICI, the Inter, I think it's the Interagency Communications Interoperability Group. We fall into, and if I say something wrong, I'm sure the captain will correct me, we fall into the San Gabriel Valley communications thing. I think it's called COMNET, which surrounds the local agencies here. So we're part of a smaller group that's part of the larger groups that gives us access to, I want to say, like, over seventy agencies to be able to have communication with them.
Chief, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, we are not part of LA RICs. We are a part of ICI, and ICI is a counterpart to LA RICs. However, both organizations have a roadmap to become fully interoperable with each other. I don't know exactly when that's going to happen, but it is a priority for both organizations. So at some point, we will. LA RICs is primarily LAPD, sheriffs, Inglewood, I believe, and strangely enough, out this way, Clermont PD. Most other agencies are ICI. But again, we do, both organizations do intend to become fully interoperable within the next few years, I believe. And the COMNET JPA that Lieutenant Hendricks was talking about is seven cities within the eastern San Gabriel Valley, and they're our closest neighbors, Camino West, Camino Glendora, Irwindale, Laverne. And I might be missing someone, but the COMNET JPA itself is a member entity of ICI. There's another South Bay JPA, which encompasses, I think, five or six cities in that area, and they are also a member entity of ICI. So I hope that kind of explains the architecture of the two systems.
Yeah, no, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that there is a roadmap in which, you know, your system will certainly connect with the other regions within LA RICs, besides just LAPD and everyone else, especially as we think about mutual aid, right? Obviously, our closest partners are the ones that, you know, matter first. But once, you know, we draw down on resources from here, we want to make sure that we still connect to the other side. My other question that I had is, under the local JPA that we have, do we also, are we also able to connect to the public safety broadband?
I'm not sure what you mean by the public safety broadband.
The public safety broadband is the project in which I believe it allows first responders, primarily police and fire, to use a separate ban that would be like G four, right? But it's specifically for public safety organizations to be able to tap into, to use for your computers. So instead of using a wireless modem, you'd be able to connect to that through a separate dedicated cellular system, you know, for the region. I know LA RICs is part of that, but I believe that's also a larger discussion, because as a result of 4G and 5G, that allows for that. So I just wanted to make sure that we're thinking about that, because that would enhance some of your services that you guys provide, but also provide some enhance some of your services that you guys provide, but also provide some offsets costs to, you know, to the JPA and to our department in the future.
Yes, sir. Well, I'll look into that and circle back with you.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. With that, I have no other questions.
Thank you, sir.
Hey. You have a motion?
We'll pass it as is. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Damian?
Yes.
And Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, City Clerk. And then item number nine, approval of mental health awareness, walk fair, and car show budget appropriation. I just wanted to double check. Manny, you're requesting 34, 475, and it's coming from the ARPA Fund?
Yes, Mayor, it is.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to double check. I know that we added to the other one just in case because I know things are hiding in demand, any sort of resource. So I would just move to have this to increase it to 40,000 flat, just so you have the extra wiggle room in case of anything.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't know if anybody has any comment on that. If not, I'll make a motion to increase the appropriation to $40,000.
Second.
Second, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. Next, we move on to City Council, acting as successor agency of the dissolved community development commission. And we have a consent counter, and I'll make a motion to pass that consent counter. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. And now we are at the public hearing. We have a request to the City Council from the Planning Commission on multiple zoning and general plan land use changes which would achieve persistency within the downtown specific plan. First things first, open up the public hearing and hear public testimony. So I will officially open the public hearing to anybody speaking in favor of that mentioned request. City Clerk, is there anybody that can speak in favor of it?
No, Mayor.
Great. So I will officially open up the public hearing. For those opposing, item number 13 on the request to the City Council from the Planning Commission. Is there anybody looking to speak in opposition?
No, Mayor.
Great. So at this moment, I will move to officially close the public hearing in favor and opposing. For item number 13 on the request. And then, so we do have item number 13, and then we have Ron, Wayne always been working on it. So Ron, do you want to tell us a little bit about this? And then I just want to double check this, this part of it. Oh, well, you have a presentation. So why don't we go with that first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council staff. I'm really excited to be presenting this to the community, to the council. Two and a half years in the making. So we'll go ahead and start off. Hold on one sec here. Just so provide some, some history on where we started and where we've worked hard to get to. So in 2016, the city approved the downtown transit oriented development specific plan. It consisted of a hybrid traditional form based related specific plan. In 2019, city staff determined that existing maximum densities of 30 units per acre along with development standards within the plan limited potential housing development within the downtown. As we were getting interest from developers and looking at that, at the downtown specific plan for potential investment opportunities within the specific plan. In 2019, staff determined that existing max densities did limit that that development. So shortly after city awarded, the city was awarded a $310,000 SB two planning grant that staff applied for from the state of the state of California Housing Community Development. And with that grant, we were able to update the specific plan to allow for increased density and implementation of a greater flexibility of development standards to incentivize housing production and 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 development opportunities within the specific plan. Next slide. So just to recap, you've seen this before, but really important to note, all the hard work and effort that we've been going through when we first started this in May of of 2020. We're now in March of 2022, where we had a series of study sessions and engagements with key stakeholders, community members. And it was definitely a community based effort. And then based on council direction, we have before you the downtown specific plan. Next slide. So as you remember, we had a three day vision in Shorette. And one thing I want to make note here is you all remember, we were at the peak of the pandemic, the COVID, and we were able to have a successful community event, Shorette, a three day process while going through the pandemic. And it was successful. If you remember, we had some deep presentations on market assessment, development strategies, also elements of successful downtowns and also mobility within the downtown. And so their concepts were presented in the evening as, as providing concepts for what to include in the downtown specific plan. Some items were revised, but really engaged the community and all the stakeholders, the council, the planning commission to essentially come forward with what we're presenting today. Next slide. I want to recap here because this is important. As you see here, a chart of existing Baldwin Park specific plan standards in comparison to the proposed downtown specific plan. If you recall seeing this, it's really important what we're doing here with this new downtown specific plan. As you notice, with the adopted downtown specific plan, it really provided the framework of what we have today. But one thing to note here is the different then the different zoning designations that existed within the downtown. So it presented some fragmented zoning. Also, you had different densities, varied densities. You have a mixed use and you have a residential guardian density from 20 units per acre, and then the mixed use at 30 units per acre. And then you have heights. So what this downtown specific plan does is that it brings a uniform, it brings a sense of predictability in development within the downtown and is respectful to the, to the residential areas with that that border the downtown specific plan. There are three zoning designations are downtown core, which is essentially Maine and Ramona. And then you have the downtown corridor. And the next slide I'll show the the zoning designations within the downtown that you have seen before. And then you have the downtown edge, which you have a lower, a different development type that respects adjacent residential structures. And then the densities, we went through that exercise, we collaborated with the council, and we were able to kind of rethink the, the the densities, the maximum density. So we were at existing at 30 units per acre, and we were able to increase that by 40 units per acre at the core, the corridor and the edge within the downtown. And then your heights, we maintain those heights within the core at 50 feet at four stories maximum. And then you have your corridor, which you start to layer at 35 to 50 feet, and then on the edge to 25 to 35 feet. Next slide. So again, here, as I've noted before, you have the difference only designations. You have industrial, commercial within the downtown. You have you have garden multifamily, which all have different development standards. And so you have sort of like this hodgepodge development that's that's taking place. And so this is the existing downtown Baldwin Park specific plan boundary. Next slide. And so now we've simplified that to create some greater flexibility. Again, the purple area is the downtown core, which is your maximum for for stories and height. And then you have your downtown corridor. And as you, you expand out and touching on the residential load, the low residential areas, you have the downtown edge. You see the blue, you have the civic center, you have your parks that are noted there, Morgan Park. And so you can see that it's provided some framework. Another thing that I wanted to also mention on this slide is that we took the opportunity to expand the boundaries a bit where it made sense. And we really analyzed the existing downtown specific plan at the time that we were at the very beginning at the at the information gathering phase where we were analyzing what worked and what didn't work. And so what we ended up doing is expanding the boundaries just a little bit so that way it made sense for development opportunity in the future. Next slide. So I want to highlight Ramona. As you know, this past weekend, the city celebrated the downtown beautification. And so of of the downtown on Ramona and Maine with all the decorative light features, the landscaping and decorative paving that that has been completed by Public Works. That sets the foundation for the future. And as you can see on the diagram at the top, you can see how that's not inviting to the pedestrian. So you see a wide four lane road. And so what this, and the next slide that you're going to see is it sets up a iconic street for the future where you have canopy trees where it's inviting and comfortable to to the pedestrian. Next slide. And again, this is what I was hinting at is that here is the vision. Again, the foundation has been set there with the downtown beautification improvements that have been made within the downtown. And you can see how with those enhancements and providing a tree canopy does a protected bike lanes, you can see at the pedestrian level that this is inviting, and it creates a sense of place for those visiting downtown Baldwin Park. And one thing to note here is that I want to take the term right out of the downtown specific plan is that it embraces the sidewalk. And another term they use is the enhancing the public realm and really take it and taking advantage of that space. And that could be outdoor dining, outdoor cafes. A lot of what people have been expressing what they would like to see in downtown Baldwin Park, and this plan embraces that. Next slide. And at this point, I'm oh, let me, before I hand it off to our consultant Kaiser Ron Walla. This slide here provides a palette of tree canopy within the downtown, which also enhances the, the comfort for the pedestrian. It really defines the street. Especially when you have, again, I use that term, the creating iconic street on Ramona. And then as you come out to to the medium to lower residential areas, you provide that canopy within the downtown. Next slide. And this slide here, this is the, this is the this is the fun slide. You know, we collaborated during the the development of the downtown specific plan, arts and culture. The city of Baldwin Park is really big. I'm really excited. I was really excited when I saw that in the agenda where we're bringing back the concerts in the park. And so that the closure of streets and parade routes that already take place within the city throughout the year and events, we expanded on that to really take advantage of areas along build, street frontages along Ramona, along Maine. And as you can see on the right hand side, where it allows an opportunity for, you know, food truck vendors, outdoor cafes, as I mentioned, and allowing the, the the use of the public round to be used not only for the use of vehicles, but also for the use of of being able to walk, bike, and and hold public events. So this is in collab, working in collaboration with our Parks and Rec Department in creating this vision for the downtown. Next slide. And now I'll hand this over to our esteemed consultant Kaiser Ron Walla.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and members of the, members of the community. What you see on this, and by the way, before I get started with me is Tim Orney and and Suzanne Huerta, our transportation and environmental consultants. So if you have any questions, they are on the call as well. What you see up on the screen is an illustrative plan. This is one of the many renderings or many renditions of what a potential built out scenario for downtown Baldwin Park could look like. This is what we call a hundred year plan. Although the life of the specific plan is typically 15 to 20 years. We wanted to stretch that out and as as you celebrate, your, your, you know, your your, your city, what does the city look like in the in the next century? And we wanted to create a built out scenario. But more importantly, it pulls together a variety of economic initiatives. It pulls together the mobility improvements, the parking strategies, the arts and culture component that Ron just spoke about, historic preservation. You are assist, you are a city with a lot of history, a lot of interesting and rich history. And what idea parks and open space that exist, but also what idea of open spaces and parks that are proposed. And then a series of infrastructure upgrades. Again, what you see up on the screen is is one of the possible scenarios. But it is the end result. And and what, what, what we, what, what is also included in the plan is series of incremental steps that the city can take to achieve this end result. So what are the things that you can do immediately? What are some of the things that you can do in the near term? And these are things that are tactical, that cost less money, the low hanging fruits. But bring the community together to build trust. And then there are those that are midterm and long term where you will need to pull together partnerships and and what idea of community resources to implement those those strategies. So the plan is flexible, but it also allows for you to incrementally build towards that grand future that that potentially could look like this. Next. But yours, here's an aerial rendering of of the downtown area. Morgan Park is at the bottom left of of the of the rendering. What was important was the direction that we received a few months back, I think, late last year from the council. Because, you know, the council was wanted to suddenly meet your housing element obligations and provide the density, but want to maintain the small scale the small scale field, a small scale town field that the that the downtown currently has. And the massing in the and 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 the context is incredibly important. And we've taken that into consideration. And as you can see here in this rendering, it's essentially a very low rise downtown with densities focused around the corner of Ramona and Maine. And Ramona is a signature corridor. You know, your seal says a hub of the San Gabriel Valley. And the city is the hub of the San Gabriel Valley, but the downtown is a hub of the city. Is a hub of the city. And and this begins to talk about that memorable experience that people can have. As they visit or pass through Ramona Avenue. In in the short term and in the future. And looking at variety of assets that you currently have in the downtown, the station and looking to link the station back to Ramona Boulevard. And and to Main Street and to Morgan Park and looking at what improvements and infrastructure changes can occur. Together with what idea of open spaces and and pathways. To connect and weave together these 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 incredible resources that you have within the downtown area. Next slide. Ron mentioned about the court, the court is very simple and easy to understand. And it represents the concepts that we have we have already mentioned. You have a court at the at Maine and and Ramona where the. Intensity and the character development is urban and that continues along. The corridor, the corridor is incredibly wide, it's about hundred fifty feet wide. So having taller buildings, three story buildings. On the corridor defining the corridors edge. While stepping back in the mass. So that as it meets the residential fabric in the back, the building mass steps back. So you can have a four story element on a three story building, provided you take off similar element. In in the in the in the rear of the building where the building meets the residential community. So very, very careful. Context massing. At the same time, allowing for higher density. And and the edge perimeter is essentially two story buildings. As it meets the residential fabric that currently exists around the downtown area. Next slide. The the standards, if you compare them to your current standards in your downtown specific plan, as well as your zoning code standards. There's a marked difference in that. These standards are illustrative. We we show what is meant by some of the standards. So they're clear and they're precise. But they're also flexible and they're illustrative. And for example, we tell where the building can be placed. And there's a range within where the building can be placed. We show the height. And and each of that metric is incredibly important in creating that urban. Fabric that we desire and we show where parking can be placed on the lot. And this is, these are standards for the downtown core. Where a building can go up to a four story, up to a four story maximum. Which is about fifty feet. Next. In addition to the height and and where you place the building. There are some additional standards about open space and not only requiring open spaces in the public realm. Public open spaces, public parks, but then continuing that. In the private realm. I I still remember going on the garage. And the views from the garage, the parking garage, which is a called structure, the views are just outstanding. And and not use. Some of the rooftops that you have within the buildings and take advantage of those open spaces that you have on the rooftop. Is is just. It just seems. To be a lost opportunity. So we're looking at a continual open spaces that start within the city, within the. The layout of the downtown and then continue on the lot, whether it's private yards or 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 in courtyards. And then continue in private realm within the balconies. And as we get past the COVID environment and the pandemic pandemic. The private open spaces become incredibly important exposure to sun and and air. And and those standards are are spelled out. As well as standards to break the buildings mass. Some of your blocks in this in the downtown area are seven hundred, five hundred feet long. And if people gather those lots, they can construct a building that's five hundred feet long. And and that's something we want to avoid. So it can be one project, but that project can be made up of several buildings. Because as you break those buildings, you create human scale and human detailing, human interest that makes the downtown. An interesting place. And the last diagram at the bottom shows. How the buildings will be accessed either by foot. And if you're accessing them by the by the automobile, it will be through an alley or through a through rear access. Next. The same standards for the corridor district. And and the next one is for the edge district. Next one, please. So this, the the these are standards for the downtown edge. Next. Now, it's the frontages of the buildings are incredibly important. Besides the landscaping that that Ron talked about. If you get the frontages of private buildings right, that's about seventy percent of urban design. And and I think what we want to do in the downtown particularly and on Ramona and other main street environment is to avoid dead walls. Because it's not safe and. Comfortable walking environment when you have a dead wall. But we also want to have right frontages on right building type. So for example, if you have a residential building. You want to either step back that residential building or raise it on a plinth. Like you do in a row house and provide steps so that the rooms have privacy. But if you have a commercial use or a retail establishment, you want that building flushed. The ground floor flush so that it's interacting with the people, it's attracting people in. And and you have eyes on the street. So the front pages are incredibly important for the buildings and the standards for the frontages. Are called out in this code as well. Next. Now, th- this is what I was talking about earlier. Some of your blocks are incredibly long. And oftentimes, as as you have in your code, you have F A R standards, Florida ratio. Which means, which tells you how much you can build. So for example, a Florida ratio of one. You can build a one story building for your entire lot. And and you just exclude that building on your block. And then design guidelines come in and you try to break that block because it's too too long, too wide. And you try to manipulate the facade, you know, change the roof, change the front elevation. But what you're not doing is breaking the box. And that's what this code does. Next slide. Is it begins to break that block into smaller elements, which is consistent with your historic fabric of the downtown smaller buildings. It can be one big project, but it's made up of smaller buildings. That are reflective of the context. So if it's a main street or Ramona, there is one context. If it's a side street or a residential street, it's a different context. And the same goes for open spaces, same goes for different street standards. So the standards in this code are modulated for the context, for the different context. That exists within the downtown traffic. Next. Back to you, Ron.
Thank you Kaiser for that. Want to highlight the development potential. We went over this during our study session. In coordination with our housing element. Update is the development potential here. This slide shows what the. Existing downtown specific plan build out. Is and comparison to what the build out is for the proposed specific plan. So I'll just go over it briefly. The acreage is a hundred and fifteen acres. With the new downtown specific plan, there's an increase of seven acres at a total of a hundred and twenty two acres. And again, that consists of just kind of. Expanding the the edges of of the downtown boundary. Residential unit capacity was eight hundred and thirty three units. With the proposed downtown specific plan. It shows an increase of nine hundred, nine hundred and twelve units for a total of a thousand seven hundred and forty five units. Over the period of of the specific plan, as Kaiser mentioned. Typically, the one special thing about this specific plan is that, you know, we're not getting a fifteen year specific plan. We're talking about a build out. You know, to fifty years. Non residential development, the existing called out for two hundred and eighty nine, a little over two hundred and eighty nine thousand square feet. The proposed specific plan, there was a decrease there based on 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 the. The form based design and the in the in the contextual architecture that that's proposed. With this plan, a reduction of a hundred and two, a little over a hundred and two thousand. Square feet and run non residential square footage. And again, you've seen this number time and time again is arena, which we're going to be coming visiting. Revisiting this as we adopt our downtown specific, I mean, our housing element update. As we submit that to the state for certification, which we're currently working on. And is two thousand and one units. In that the city has to plan for that capacity. And this downtown specific plan is assisting along with additional efforts throughout the city and meeting that. That state requirement of building for that capacity of two thousand and one units. Next slide. There was an environmental review conducted for this, an addendum was prepared. And essentially found that the updates to the specific plan would not introduce new significant environmental impacts beyond those which were. Previously identified within the E I R that was adopted in twenty sixteen. And so that has been completed. Next slide. Funding toolbox. One of the the really neat things about the funding toolbox. Is that it identifies policies and actions and it sets goals and policies for the city to. To work on. And it puts the responsibility on staff to. Make sure that this plan is successful. And so there's a low hanging fruit items that staff can easily. Work on in in enhancing the downtown. And then there are others in it. It identifies funds, grant funds. And it also identifies a combination of general funds and also offsetting that leveraging that with. The help of the development community as well. And again, some of the tools here is. For goals and policy, I mean, policies and actions is, you know, setting up special district financing tools. You know, making sure that staff continues to go out and seek funding, grant funding, whether that's state and federal. And also public and and private initiatives. A lot of the things that we're doing now, especially. With the the night market coming to us in the summer. That that is going to cause for other exciting activities to happen within within the downtown. Next slide. So next steps with the adoption of the downtown specific plan. Is to go offer an RFP to for a specialized service. Of seeking an urban design firm. To support staff in reviewing development within the downtown to make sure that we good. And you've heard me repeat this to, I'm sure everyone's heard this at least once from me. Is there's no reason why the city of Baldwin Park shouldn't have. Good design and good architecture and all those things that the community deserves in in the city of Baldwin Park. So that would be the next step. And I also want to highlight really exciting because SCAG in partnership with the Urban Land Institute. Found out about the city's effort and wants to showcase our. Our downtown specific plan. Next week on Monday, myself and Victor Vieramontes, Economic Development Analyst. Will be heading down to downtown and carrying a couple of nicely printed specific plan copies. To showcase what the city of Baldwin Park is doing. For its downtown. So it's going to be a great opportunity to meet developers, the development community that are. And let them know all the exciting things that the city of Baldwin Park is planning for their downtown. So we're really excited on attending that event. Next week on Monday. Next slide. Before I get to staff recommendation, one thing I did a note in there, I'm really excited to also announce to the council and staff. And the community is that we submitted last week to the American Planning Association. For consideration of an urban design award. And so really excited that we submitted that application. A lot of hard work and effort, as you can see in these two years. And couldn't be done without your support and the community's efforts and making this happen. So. I will be sure to let those know if we we do get considered. For that award. So I'm really looking forward to that. In conclusion. Staff recommends that the council approve Resolution twenty twenty two. Zero one two approving general plan land use amendments to achieve consistency within the downtown specific plan. And also introduce ordinance amending chapter one fifty three of the municipal code. As it pertains to implementation of the downtown specific plan. That concludes my presentation. I want to thank again the council, the community staff. Public Works, Manny, Helen and Parks and Rec. And everyone here at the at the city that participated in helping make this plan. Possible. And again, it was a community based effort and an effort that we all worked on together. So I definitely want to say thank you. Also want to give thanks to. The consultant team Kaiser Ron Wala. And also the transportation firm Tim Ernie. And also Suzanne Huerta, the consultant for the environmental. Review of this project. So that concludes the staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, our consultants are here to answer any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. You know, I think we're all excited to see. This come to a be completed. I know that, you know, we we've all had some input. You know, I'm glad that I was able to put in some input. I know this this started before me, but I'm glad that I can. I was able to have a say in it and. And reduce density, I think. You know, I know that it's important that we increase our 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 heart. Oh, sorry about that. I know that it's important that we increase our ability to provide housing, but I think that one of the, you know, and I, and it's kind of a part of our history. One of the biggest. Things that residents in the city of Ball Park have always not been fond of is too much density at a time. I think that the. The proposed plan meets the needs of of a of development, but it also is able to consider. You know, the 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 request of the community and and protect our our landscape and our and the feel of our downtown, which I think is very important to a lot of us. So, you know, very glad and of course, thank you to Kaiser and his team and Ron and everybody. And your team for for getting this done. Very excited to see this come to a close. And then, of course, there's more communicate, there's more, there's more plans to be made after this, right? And I know I've been bugging Ron. And so, you know, based on, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure maybe even Kaiser is going to be glad to hear this, but you know, we. We we've limited density in one place. And I think it's important that we. That we look at other areas, whether it's through specific plans. I know that we have the Sierra Vista Center. Specific plan. And one of those is that. You know, and then something that you said was that zoning codes are over twenty years old, right? And so, you know, twenty year olds zoning codes are one of the biggest issues. Because a lot of the times, you know, we're talking about this vision that we want to have for the city. And so we have a vision, you know, and there may be property available. And then sometimes there's money available. But the zoning is not available, right? And so sometimes we look at, you know, a building and we could say, or a lot, I'm going to say, hey, this would be really good for mixed use. So this would be really good for housing. Or some density or to bring in a business. But then it turns out that we can't based on the zoning that's been there. Outdated zoning, right? To say the least. So, you know, I would like to have that discussion, maybe bring some propositions as to how we can get that going. I know that it's a. It is something expensive, but it's necessary to develop our downtown, not just our downtown, our our community in general and make sure that. You know, that our community thrives and we're able to provide the housing that we need. And of course, more resources, more stores. And which in turn benefits the city. So, you know, that's just a part of the discussion that I want to add after we're done with this. Yes, Councilman Rabula.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. It was very detailed. I am excited to. To see this. This project that has been in the works for a while now flourish. And the county to really comes to life front. So I'm looking forward to that. And I like the fact that. That you pay attention to architecture, that that we should have good architecture here in the city of Baldwin Park. I completely agree with you. It has to stand out for us and for everybody that comes into our city. So. They can leave and say, wow, look at what happened to Baldwin Park. I'm already getting a lot of comments from people. Wow, Walton Park's looking really good. You guys are all doing an amazing job. You guys are all doing an amazing job. And so I say, you know, we have great staff. We have great staff that that helps us with our vision and they have a vision and they add. So that's what's what's making everything move forward. So, so thank you for that presentation. Also, congratulations on being invited to present your, your plan. And that's exciting that you got invited to to go out there because they they were impressed with the plan that you have for the city of Baldwin Park. And good luck and hopefully you get that award, the American Planning Association Award. Good luck. Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank Ron for all his diligence on this project. I know that it's been a long time coming to get to this day. And Ron, I want to say thank you for managing, leading this effort and also to our consulting team that provided the expertise. It will be very different and interesting to see this form based zoning. A part of me is a little, you know, reluctant, but a part of me is excited to see what projects will come from this. And I do also want to express my appreciation to you for, you know, the design guidelines. And I think we were going to move forward with hiring a consultant to help us with the design of projects moving forward, right? So that's exciting and comforting as well as we embark kind of on a new way of doing things in the city of Baldwin Park. As far as the environmental review, so there it found like no significant impact with the added densities in the core?
No, through the through the environmental review, thankfully, based on the way that the existing EIR, what they what it analyzed and with the increase, it didn't pose any significant increases. So that's why we were able to do the addendum.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as, you know, that's the case, then then that's good. Because if it did pose any questions, you know, it was some, it's something we would want to mitigate now, right? But but it sounds like, go ahead.
Yeah, so there it's not like there's nothing that needs to be mitigated. The EIR, there's, we still have to refer to the EIR that was originally completed. There are mitigations in there that still need to be respected. When development comes into the city.
Right, okay, so good. And then as far as, you know, kind of the vision for the city, when I've talked with residents, I think that what I've heard is development in the core, the downtown area, along the commercial corridors makes sense. And then preserving residential, single family, you know, in neighborhoods. That's, that's always kind of, that's been consistent in the time that I've served on this city council nearly fifteen years now. So any direction that we go, you know, I would continue to advocate for that. And for us to look at opportunities for development, again, along commercial corridors and some of the larger corridors. But for me, it doesn't make sense to look at higher density residential in single family, you know, neighborhoods. So just want to provide that information because I'll continue to advocate for that. And, you know, right now, it's a good time to provide that direction. Of course, if any other members of the council have any thoughts, they can chime in too, but those are my thoughts. And so I'd like to continue. I know that we have new policies that are coming from the state related to ADUs and that will certainly change in an R one zoning that will be impacted. But to the extent possible, I think what I've heard from residents over the years is let's preserve those neighborhoods as much as possible. And all of us, as members of the council, have heard residents complaining about parking and things like that. So I think that we could all appreciate that. But as far as a downtown specific plan, I just want to congratulate you on getting us here today. You know, to this vote and kudos, kudos to you for your leadership and your management. And thank you to the consulting team as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. One thing I wanted to mention is I forgot to mention in this is that so far meetings that we've had with potential developers interested in coming and making investment in the downtown. It's been well received. I can tell you just weeks ago that we had a meeting regarding a development in the downtown. And they said that the specific plan, we respect the vision. We like what you guys are proposing and it's it's cutting edge. And so it's been really a breath of fresh air that people are taking it positively.
That's the point, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Ron, for for all of your work. And again, tremendous staff participation, not only in your team, but all the other departments from Wreckin' Parks and so forth. So kudos to all of you for, you know, guiding us through this extensive process. I know we've gone back and forth on a few times and with Kaiser and your team, thank you for for being patient and to assisting us. You know, I'm certainly looking forward to, you know, over the next five years of what the downtown area will look like. I think there's a lot of opportunities there to bring in, you know, and revive the downtown area that provides, you know, services and other, you know, entertainment activities that will, you know, act as a catalyst for the rest of the corridor, not only the downtown, but the, you know, the arteries moving out. I do appreciate the the walkability. That's a big piece for, I think, for all of us. We have certainly a city in which a lot of folks, you know, take their their morning, afternoon and late night walks. So that's something that I think certainly, you know, adds more vibrant to our area. You know, as similar to what Councilmember Garcia has mentioned, you know, we too have certainly heard, you know, I've certainly heard the the comments from residents and neighbors that, you know, they, you know, sometimes they feel that they're being, you know, that they're being pushed in, you know, from by other neighbors because of, you know, certain development. So for, you know, for outside of that main corridor, you know, past, you know, all of another other areas, there's certainly opportunities to look upon new ideas, you know, as we're trying to do the, you know, I believe it's the the form can, I can't remember the FST.
Form based?
Form based ordinance, which is obviously new. And it's certainly leading, leading us in the sense of, you know, leaning forward, right? To the, to the extent where, you know, we're now being recognized for that. And that truly is back to the work that you've all done to help guide us and to capture all of our voices, you know, in a collective manner and to provide that long term vision for those developers, right? Because that's exactly, this is the, this is the planning tool that will, you know, give them a sense and provide them the opportunity to come to our city and know clearly as to what we're looking for, what we're not looking for and so forth. So with that, thank you. You know, I think our residents will certainly see a difference over the next couple of years, but this is just the first step.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Any other council members have any comments, concerns? If not, I think, you know, there's a good conversation, Ron. Definitely some exploring to do. You know, I agree, we want to take care of our residential areas, but I think there's a lot of corridors that can use a lot of a lot of revitalization. You know, we've seen a lot of condos pop up on those quarters and we want to make sure that at least there's something for those people to do, right? So, thank you. So I will make a motion to pass, so adopt the city council resolution twenty twenty two dash zero one two entitled a resolution of the city council of the city of Ballpark, California adopting the findings of fact and approving the general plan land use amendments to achieve consistency with the downtown specific plan. And then where's our city attorney? So city attorney's legal, just double check, can we pass both at the same time or would it just be one at a time?
Robert, you need to unmute.
You can pass both, pass both at the same time, mayor.
Great. And then so adding to that motion, I'll introduce the first reading by title only ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballpark amending chapter one five three of the municipal code zoning ordinance as it pertains to the implementation of the ballpark downtown specific plan. And it is my motion to approve that. Can I get a second? City clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila? Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, city clerk. And so we are at reports officers, we have the ballpark resident owned utility district program decertification and reversion process summary report. So I know that this is a lengthy one, but I think it's an important one for all of us to be aware of what is going on with this one. Enrique, do you want to kind of touch on this? I know that, you know, one of our biggest concerns was that we were facing a multimillion dollar deficit within a couple of years. So you can also touch on that as well and where we're at now.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you to the city council. Yes, and indeed, I can say it with complete confidence that we have crossed the finish line on this process. The reversion and decertification process of the B Proud Program. It's been a journey that has been riddled with difficult moments, you know, sometimes very stressful moments. But with with all of the right elements on the team and with your leadership, we've been able to bring it to a a landing that has been positive. So I want to write, write at the outset, as you pointed out, mayor, that we have landed this program, this process in while being able to recoup pretty much every dollar that was borrowed from the general fund, including some of the early investments that were made in in the inception of the program. And while we have crossed the finish line, you know, we, 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 we're at the point now of deciding if we go around for a victory lap or we do two laps, two victory laps, depending on what will come in in the subsequent few months. But I want to assure the city council that we're in a good place financially. We are not at any risk of losing any money. We, we, you'll see in the report as we go into the numbers that where the financials stand us up now. And and there's still some remaining additional gains after the months of January and February. And the receivables from those are able, able to be closed as well as the expenses related to the purchase of energy. But you'll see those numbers as as my colleagues join me for the rest of the report. And I want to point out to some of the critical milestones that I believe were crucial in being able to propel us to to this good positive landing. And and I want to completely acknowledge the fact that it all began with with the courageous decision that the the mayor and the city council made in directing and 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 proceed and directing us to proceed with the decertification and the reversion process, notwithstanding the uncertainty that would come with it. And, you know, as it turns out, it wasn't just us in the city of Baldwin Park who who didn't necessarily know what lied ahead. It was the entire industry. We, we came to discover that, you know, we, we were the first program that would have gone through this decertification. So even our partners, while they obviously know the industry, they didn't know the full decertification process. And neither did the CPUC. So in, in a way, we learned together with the CPUC on on all the steps that come with a decertification. But I want to point out the courageous decision that you made, city council and mayor at the outset directing us to proceed with it. There was also one a couple of conversations early on that proved to be critical. And, you know, one such conversation was with the, with Jason Claude, who is the executive director of the Cal Choice JPA. And actually, Jason is on the call here and he'll, he'll do a brief presentation himself. But that conversation with him gave us some reassurances that that Cal Choice was was going to be a a fully collaborative and cooperative partner as we went through the decertification and reversion process, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, this may have been a bit averse to Cal Choice. But Jason gave, he said, assurances from the very outset about Cal Choice being fully collaborative and cooperative. So that was crucial early on. Similarly, I want to say that the same embracing cooperation from Southern California Edison at the outset, Samantha Nicely and Michael Williams, Sal Ramirez from Southern California Edison proved to be pivotal because, as you will hear a little later, you know, one of the scary things that we were facing early on was the the cost of of what ends up being called the reentry fee. And this is what Edison has to recoup and being able to absorb a whole new set of customers and 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 be able to assign their investment cost onto this new customers. And as it turns out, with Edison's full cooperation, that ended up being a very minimal amount instead of it being in the millions, it ended up being just in a few thousand. So those, those three milestones were crucial at the very outset of of us getting underway with the reversion program. Just a quick refresher, if we go to the next page. You know, it's hard to believe, but you know, we started in June, June of twenty twenty one going on nine months and and yes, this had been arduous seven months or so. Every step of the way, it seemed like every decision that we made or every step we took appeared to be very consequential. And of course, we, we always feared that it'd be negatively consequential. But it was always collectively that we were able to take on the challenges as it came along. Early in the process as well, we brought on board Cordoba Corporation and they had been incredibly instrumental in helping us, us, our staff in in bringing this forward. And the transition has been really smooth. And in fact, as of today, we can attest to the fact that every single customer had been, has been migrated over and converted or reverted to Edison. As as of the end of February, we had the majority of the customers reverted, but not all of them. We in fact had two remaining outstanding customers that were still not yet reverted as of last Friday, but on Friday, we got the certification from Edison that every single customer now has reverted. And we'll go into the numbers financially, the outcomes were, were very positive with more upside yet to be received, we feel. And you'll hear Steve go into that as well. Many people to thank, including our legal team, obviously, you know, Robert, Best Betton Krieger and many other consultants that are part of the Cal Choice family. I want to definitely thank them all and and again, recognize the the courage of the city council. So with that, I'd like for Daniel and Steve to go into many of the things that went on and most importantly, the numbers. So with that, I'd like for Danielle and Steve to go into many of the things that went on and most importantly, the numbers. Next page.
Thank you Enrique. Thank you Enrique. I appreciate that. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'll just give you a, an overview of the key activities and then I'll ask my colleague Stephen to dive into the numbers a little bit more. So we've continued to have multiple meetings with all the relevant partners. That you saw on the last page, there was just a number of activities that needed to be managed. There was a number of dependencies to get certain tasks done to move on to the next ones. So the team were great in cooperating. Holding time so that we could have these meetings and make the progress we needed to with the CPUC, Cal Choice, Southern California Edison. And with your own staff to make sure everything was getting addressed. Because of all those activities, we, the Baldwin Park was able to send a notification to CPUC at the end of November. Doing the official notice of deregistration, which triggered a number of these other activities. As, as your CEO is saying. The reentry fee, as Edison calls it, the, the fees associated with moving back to. The utility was much lower than anticipated. A lot of that due to. Baldwin Park having already a number of contracts, energy contracts or the energy purchased. So the reentry fee was around $8,000. Which has already been paid. We had a minor issue that the Edison billing system. Found in the first two weeks of December, essentially when the city council voted on the retroactive rate increase. There was a glitch in Edison's system. They were great about putting their teams over weekends to resolve the issue. It initially resulted in a delay of revenue, but after that, the issue was resolved and all the revenue was collected. So there were no issues. As a team, we decided we wanted to pilot test and see how the reversion would work. As you noticed in the last slide, there was over 17,000 customers. But in this instance, we piloted about 119 customers, a mix of Edison employees, Baldwin Park employees. Baldwin Park facilities, a mix of different customers. And we reverted them early with Edison and Calpine's assistance. And no issues transitioning back. So that gave us a good indication that we shouldn't have issues and. As described, issues were not found. It worked really well. Cal Choice was a great partner, had to engage in several negotiations. Baldwin Park had 36 contracts that had to be addressed one way or another, whether reassigning, liquidating, et cetera. My colleague will speak more to that, but. The net benefit of those negotiations. Was about $2.9 million. And then throughout the entire process, we ensured to communicate with your customers. So they understood what was happening. Whether it was B Proud's website in the beginning, to direct mailings, to bill messaging a couple of times on, on the bills. Every avenue we could find to make sure the customers knew what was going on. The Cal, the call centers, both for Calpine and Edison had. Information describing what was happening. I think we had maybe 12 calls and nobody was even asking about this. So they're just normal routine calls that came through. So that turned out to be a good. Result as well. And then lastly, as Ryan from BBK will be speaking. He is working with the CPUC to coordinate and identify future regulatory requirements. There are certain lag items that happen. That you report on the year. You know, that has passed already. So he's working on trying to resolve those for you and, and he'll speak to that as well. So if you go to the next slide, I'll ask my colleague Stephen Scott to give an overview of the financial impact.
Hi, thank you, everyone. So you know, the, the previous time we came in October, we had stated that one of the more likely. Potential outcomes is that the city would be in the hole about a million to $2 million. And you know, what we're going to be talking about today is, as Enrique has said, is much better than expected. Is what, where we stand right now. But you know, it can't be understated. The impact that Enrique has had in fostering a spirit of collaboration and excellence across all of these teams. It's been a major effort. And it's because of the teamwork. That these results, which are more the tangible side of how the project has gone. But it shows. Also in the forecast that we had last time, it did not include the previous losses that had been incurred in the previous fiscal years. So these are included here. And as you can see at the bottom line, we're still looking pretty good. So the general fund loan, you're well aware is 2.6 million. The negotiated contract sales, those really surprised us. And much higher than we anticipated. We had anticipated maybe collecting about 10% revenue. On that we collected much higher. And that partly had to do with. The luck or the right timing of going into the market to negotiate these contracts. It was a perfect time to do it. Also, the, the strong negotiation skills of Cal. Yeah, of, of Cal Choice. And, and also Enrique and the legal team pushing back and saying, you need to go back and ask for more. So those three elements came together to, to give. An additional $2 million to this project. Some of the other items. We have, you know, the professional services that are going to be paid from March through the end of June to Cal Choice. You also have the professional services that are the legal fees as well as the Cordoba fees. The reentry fee, which we expected much, much higher. And part of that also is because. Working jointly with Edison, we found the perfect time to. To revert, which was in February, which provided the, the most efficient. Time for Edison and the less resources for them. So we've got the, the letter of credit will be coming in. As soon as we certify, send the decertification completion letter to the CPUC when that occurs. Letter credit will be released from the Citibank, City River Bank. We've got the CAT program, which already funded. Us or the city of Baldwin Park. The next three are still unknown. Our, our expectation is that it will be either neutral. So no additional costs. Or it could even go as high as $400,000 in the positive. But we have some large outstanding. Charges that are still to be charged and collected. So for example. The delayed billing and payment arrangements that probably is going to be a smaller fee, but. Our customers have been making these payment arrangements because of the pandemic. And the CPUC allowed up to 12 months to set out this payment arrangement. So. In June, we're going to have a settlement with. SCE and they'll take over all of those payment arrangements. So there should be some positive funds coming in. On the accounts receivables and payables, you have customers that pay. You know, up to 60 and 90 days. And so those monies are going to be coming in March through. All the way through June, but majority of those will be paid by April. So there, there'll be a large cash out. Income from that one approximately $1.7 million come in from customer billings during that time period. But you also have then the charges back to the vendor that provided the electricity for the producers. So those kind of offset and we could be, we could be getting somewhere in the range of 2 to 400,000. But we won't know that for sure. So we, what we've done is that we've kept that as a TBD. We have not changed the bottom line figures. We've only included in the bottom line figures. What we expect, what we know for sure has been received. So the, the Kaiser settlements are kind of like a black box. But you, the Kaiser manages the entire Western grid. With all of the transmission lines. And what they do is they look at all the inputs and the outputs. And they consolidate all of that. And then they charge back either. To the, to the city or they have. Credits that go back to the city. An example of what a Kaiser settlement might be is let's say that in one of the major hubs. There was congested and so all of the electricity that was purchased didn't go through to the city. And so in that case, then the city would receive a credit. Well, we won't know any of that until May. So there's a lot of calculations. So the bottom line, you know, it's, it's much better than expected. If we only look at the current fiscal year. So far, we have in the green $186,000. If we include the previous losses. Then we're looking at a loss of 87,000. Still much better than expected when we had the forecast of one to two million. So that, that concludes my exciting walk through this slide. Now for Samantha.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I just wanted to caveat my connection was not great. We don't use Zoom at SCE. But my computer kept freezing. So just wanted to apologize in advance because I am using my cell phone. On that note, good evening and thank you for having me. As mentioned, my name is Samantha Nicely and I manage the team that oversees our third parties. So such as your CCAs. And as mentioned, it does take a village, but I did want to acknowledge our project manager that led the reversion effort on the SCE side. His name is Nick Jacobs. He had a conflict and was not able to join us. But he's with us in spirit. And although I'm representing SCE tonight, he did a lot of the heavy lifting for us. And so I wanted to be sure to give him the well deserved credit. We, we wish it was under different circumstances. However, the collaboration and partnership, as you've heard from, from probably everyone speaking so far tonight with Baldwin Park and all the stakeholders. It's been great and it is one of my weekly meetings that I actually look forward to going to. And I'm happy to say that overall, we did have a successful implementation. It was positive for all involved and most importantly, you know, for our customers. As you can see on the slide, this was a significant effort. It started last year. We returned over 17,000 customers over the course of a month as planned. And I should note that through 314, we are at 98.9% build. So there's a slight update to what you see there on the slide. So continue to make great progress as we conclude this transition. And what helped in the success was Baldwin Park taking a proactive approach and allowing us to develop a plan, including conducting the pilot. That was also mentioned earlier, the previous reversion that we went through, SCE did not afford us that option and it was a challenging experience. But from that, we also learned a lot and it enabled us to apply lessons learned to this reversion process. So for example, transitioning on the customer's meter read date and avoiding transferring customers during the middle of a billing cycle. Which was significant in avoiding customer confusion and dissatisfaction. So although communication and customer notifications, all of that was very important. Ultimately, you want this to be transparent and the customer really to not even notice. Based on the low volume of customers calling in and no escalations, the communication plan. And the transition itself demonstrated as a best case scenario. Customer wise, there is really no difference from any other of SCE's customers. The only difference to the customer. Is that SCE will once again be providing their generation of their electrical service. So once all CC charges have been reconciled. Bless you.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all good. The be proud portion of the bill, it will go away. But as, as I've said, like really the good outcome is that most customers will not even realize there was a change. Because things on their end were so smooth. So. The partnership was so positive that although the SCE team that manages CCAs will no longer be meeting weekly. And working directly with Baldwin Park, you know, the city would still remain engaged, you know, for example, with their public affairs advisor. And as an SE customer would be able to participate in eligible programs, et cetera. But to make sure we don't miss each other too much, we have agreed to meet once or twice over the next few months, just to stay in touch. Before we fully break up the band and just to make sure, you know, everything continues to go smoothly as we truly finalize everything. So again, it takes a village. So my thanks and appreciation to all. I'm proud of what this collaboration was able to accomplish. All while keeping our mutual customers' best interests as a priority. So I thank you all for your time.
Next slide. Jason.
Enrique, good evening. Council Mayor, thanks for having me here. As you know, this probably isn't the, wasn't the happiest process for us. But nonetheless, we have some key tenants to our program and the program that you were part of. One of that is consumer choice, which is obviously very important because we are all represent those citizens we represent is also well, as well as the city's. Prioritization and the city's willingness to continue to participate. So we respect those and I think as Enrique commented, I appreciate those comments. We felt the professional responsibility to lean in and partner to help achieve your goals. And I think we did that very well. Not only is our team, we're very proud to be part of that, but also the other collaborators on there to, to make sure that we won, protected the customer first. Protected the city's assets and also protecting the total program and the members of Cal Choice. So I think we did that as a team and. Although we're probably not happy about you guys leaving, the reality is, is that at least when you did. We did it in the right way and we're proud to say that we, you know, we held up our end of the bargain. And if there's anything we can do to continue to help, we're always here for you guys.
Thank you, Jason. Next slide there.
Thank you, Enrique. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Ryan Baron, Best Bestin Krieger, special counsel to the city. I'm going to go over briefly some of the wrap up on the regulatory front that we've been working with the city and Cal Choice on. You know, as you can imagine, when you are a community choice aggregator, you're heavily regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. There are dozens of reports, filings, other proceedings you have to participate in. And we have been diligent in working with the city team, with the Cal Choice team, with Cal Choice's legal counsel, Bron Blazing. On wrapping up those requirements with weekly calls with the Public Utilities Commission and then other, other calls and emails as well. We have been identifying those remaining regulatory requirements. Unfortunately, when a CCA deregisters or decertifies, if you will. It has to go through each and every proceeding and look at what it can get waived, what it can get out of. And what other requirements may still apply until the PUC considers it fully deregistered. And that includes going through a dozen or more different immediate filings right now. And we can successfully report that we made great progress and many of those requirements have been waived. We are still awaiting for CPUC final decisions on a couple of them. In the near future, which we expect hopefully to get soon. But that we have been successful in working through that process. With the, your direction tonight. The letter has been prepared that would go to the CPUC tomorrow or in the next day or two. That would identify those regulatory obligations that have been satisfied. And ask the PUC for acknowledgement of those and an expeditious decertification. Process. So that would give a be proud finality that it is formally decertified. And some of the things in that letter include. Winding up what we call integrated resources planning. You are required to participate in a lot of the state planning showing that. CCAs and load serving entities are moving toward the state's renewable and GHG reduction goals. That's a very, very large proceeding that happens every two years, very costly in terms of the reporting that you have to do. But we, we can report that there is a tentative decision to relieve, be proud of that obligation. As well as noting that it doesn't have any further renewable planning reports to file. We do think there will be a compliance report to file on August 1st for last year's load. And we still are working out. Some final verification and certification of. of renewables for this compliance period, which runs 2021 to 2024. And trying to get that early verification now and not wait two years. So we're still closing that out with the PUC and the California Energy Commission. But can successfully report that probably 90, 90% of the requirements to date have been satisfied or waived. So with that, I will I'll turn it back to the CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And so now we get to the meat of the report, all of the actions that require council approval. In the 12 recommendations on that report, one that I want to point out, it also points to it it illustrates the the cooperative nature of the process. He chose was agreeable. I mean, obviously it makes sense that as they going to help us for the next four months. That the fee not be the same. So they we were able to negotiate a reduction, a significant reduction, almost half of what the fee had been to what it's going to be now. And that includes all the entire family of sub consultants. They have a number of sub consultants, specialty sub consultants that are part of the team. So so that's one of the actions that we're asking you to approve the amendment to the agreement with Cal Choice. And then all of the other 12 recommendations, Mayor and and council members. For for you to authorize us to proceed with a number of activities that will follow after your approval. But we're we've crossed the finish line. I will, I want to repeat that. Now it's it's really wrap up and sort of fine tuning some of the remaining activities. And next page. And then the the very last, I think we should be at the end. Last page, next, there you go. Yes. Logos are always great to look at. So so that's our presentation, Mayor and Council Members. And we can now open it up for comments, discussion or questions.
Great. Well, I want to start off by thanking all of you. I know that it was a it was a long, long process. I know you guys got down to the nitty gritty. And then, of course, Cal Choice and everybody else for for being good partners and working with us and making this a smooth transition for everybody. And then, of course, Enrique, I know that you came in right when we were contemplating this decision. Not an easy decision to make, but I think it was one that was just best for the city. So of course, this is a, you know, this is one of your biggest wins and I think it's it's one of your biggest accomplishments. And you're a short time here in the city and I want to acknowledge that because it shows the residents that you are a competent city manager that that cares and is willing to put in the skill sets to represent them. Even in the toughest decision making, right? So thank you for that. And thank you for the presentation. I think it was very detailed that answered my question. So I don't have any questions. So I will pass this on to the council if they have any questions or comments.
Mayor, I may, I just want to say Enrique, you know, thank you very much. I know you came in in June and you started tackling this in June. But like the mayor said, this wasn't an easy choice. But when we looked at all the numbers and the factors behind it, it was a tough choice that we had to make. And we knew we were going to risk maybe losing somebody out, but compared to what we were projecting over the next 10 years. Honestly, it scared me. It almost looked like we was going to bankrupt the city. We weren't going to have the money to 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 continue with this program. So I want to thank you and and the entire team that helped decertify this this program. And I'm just glad that, you know, we're we're at the finish line and we don't have to worry about the be proud program any longer. So thank you, Enrique, and thank you to the team.
Councilmember Robbie, sorry.
Thank you. I want to echo for Councilmember Damian and Mayor Estrada have have said. Thank you, Enrique, for taking this on. You came on, like they said, very tough situation. Very tough decisions we had to make and you didn't hesitate for a moment. You you showed the confidence that you had and you you really showed us what you're about and that you really care about community and we did make a tough choice, but I do believe it was the best choice for all of us. So thank you. And I want to thank all the partners that that helped the process. Actually smoother, it was a better smoother process than we expected. So thank all of you for helping us. You know, in this partnership. Without really creating much conflict to our city. So thank you for the service that you provided BP Proud. And thank you for all of you that that work together to to cancel the the program as well. Thank you.
And I believe a customer Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, Stephen, thank you very much and your team for for guiding us through this process. And more importantly, you know, bringing some of the hard choices to to the forefront. For council to understand, you know, this a little bit further than than what we've kind of gone through in the past. You know, to Edison and to Cow Choice, thank you for for being open to the conversation and for assisting us on both on the way out and on the way back in. So again, we appreciate your openness, your partnership. And again, at the end of the day, as as you can imagine, you can certainly respect, you know, the choices that we've made as difficult as they might be. But we're, you know, ultimately looking to provide the best service to our residents. And I don't think you could, anyone could fault us for that. This is a process that's taken quite some time, but because of everyone's willingness to work with us and the entire Baldwin Park team. We certainly have been able to walk out of this, you know, with our heads held high. And more importantly, ensuring that our residents are not negatively impacted whatsoever during this transition period. So thank you again for for all all that you've done.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank Enrique for your leadership and guiding us through this this process. And I also want to thank all the partners for the collaborative. You know, effort and for contributing to this so positively. So that it would be a smooth transition for the city and for our residents and and SCE customers now. So definitely want to say thank you for all of that. It was looking a little bit, we were all a little concerned about this last year about this time. And it just is very comforting to know that we've we made it through that process. You made it all very seamless and to the benefit, I think of all who were involved. So want to recognize that effort. I did hear Stephen say that there will be updated numbers on the delayed billing and payment arrangements and the account receivables payables. And so I guess I just assume that we're probably going to get the updated numbers probably in May of this year or maybe May or June. And I think that was Stephen that commented on that. Oh, Stephen, there you are.
Yeah, here I am. Yeah, I think it'll be June. We'll get some numbers earlier. So I think in May we'll get the accounts receivable payable piece. And then in June, we'll get the Kaiser settlements piece and also the what we're working on with the delayed billing payment rate. That will be in June as well.
Okay, great. So I would say by June, we'll know where we land.
It'll be a for sure, for sure landing in June and probably a really good indication in May. Because the accounts receivable payables is going to be a pretty big chunk.
Okay.
Either way.
Good. Then we'll definitely be looking out. And I know that is going to bring that information back to us. I just wanted a timeframe. And then as far as Ryan, you mentioned that the 90% of the regular tour items are satisfied with CPUC. Are any of the other items, any, do you see any concern with them or is it expected to go pretty smoothly?
It's been pretty smooth. And when I say 90%, one of them, we have a tentative decision from the PUC. To get the city out of this integrated resource planning obligation. We're just waiting for the final decision to to be published and that's standard. They do what's called a proposed decision and then a final. And then we are still working with the, we're trying to hurry the CEC up. So we could submit paperwork showing that you satisfied your renewable requirements for this 2021 to 2024 period. Normally you file that up when the period's done in early 2025 and we're trying to say, well, the program's decertified. The city is not going to have staff, Cal Choice is not going to be around then. So we'd like to submit the paperwork early. So we're kind of going through their bureaucracy on how they do that. But we don't anticipate any major hiccups. But we we will know once we get a final sign off of the letter I mentioned. So that's what I meant by the 90%.
Got it. Okay, good. Well, good. We're, you know, we're we're pretty much there, it sounds like. So just again, want to say thank you. I look forward to the the next update and it's absolutely something to celebrate. So thank you, Enrique. Thank you, everybody.
At this moment, we are ready to make motions. So I'll make a motion to pass. Item number four. And subsequently, all of it's.
That's item number 14, Mayor.
Sorry, number 14. I saw that for number 14. So I remember 14 and of course, everything in it as recommended by staff. Can I get a second?
And for the record, Mayor, that includes recommendations one through 12, correct?
Yes. So item number 14, including its subsequent numbers, one through 12 and approved, approved staff, staff's recommendations.
And we all second at the same time.
I can do any, meaning, many more if you want me to.
Sure.
I think I heard. You guys want to do it again? It's okay.
Just choose one. At this point, we're all gonna.
Councilmember Garcia, second. City clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Sorry, yes.
Mayor Proton, Damian.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. So we are at introduction ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Council of the City of Ballin Park, California, amending chapter 73 of the Ballin Park Municipal Code relating to speed limits on certain streets. Does anybody have any questions on this? If not, I will just make a motion to.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, real quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. I'm quite appreciative that staff went back and did the the survey study once again. I think both myself and Councilmember Avila had some concerns around seven or so corridors, you know, and obviously based on the timing. It also reflects that, given the new study, it shows that we were status quo. We're not actually going to be increasing the speed limits in some of the areas that we're looking at. In fact, there's two areas in which we're going to decrease the speed limits from 45, from 40 to 35 miles. So thank you, staff, for, you know, looking, looking at this once again. You know, obviously increasing speeds in a residential area just sometimes doesn't seem right, especially once we learned, you know, understood, I know staff was trying to be proactive and work through this process as as part of, you know, the mandate that we have to follow. So thank you, Sam, and thank you, you know, John's, I think John's maybe around still, I don't know. For his assistance and working on this project, because I know this is, you know, one of those other legacy items that's just making it much safer for all of our city and all of our residents. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Robbie.
Yes, I also want to thank them for going back and between those areas that that we requested because they were a concern and I'm glad the outcome was favorable for our residents. So thank you.
Great. So if there's no more comments, I will make a motion to introduce the first reading by title only ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of Ballin Park, California, amending chapter 73 of the Ballin Park Municipal Code relating to speed limits on certain streets to pass. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Damian.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And we have item number 16, request for direction regarding city council term limits. Staff recommends that city council provide direction regarding ballot measure language to bring back for approval. So I did read the staff report and it says, and it sounds like staff is also looking to do a survey from the region and just in general to see what other cities are doing. So I'm not sure if Councilmember Damian, did you want to provide a suggestion today or did you want to wait for that survey to see what other cities are doing?
My my, well, my, I mean, we could actually, you know, wait for that, but my suggestion was to propose a term limit of 12 years. Per office. So for example, if you are on the city council and you turned out after 12 years. And you want to run for mayor, then your 12 years start again as mayor or city treasurer or city clerk. And then I would also like to see where if you were on one of these offices and you turned out at 12 years. You can't let an election go by and then come back and run again. So that would be, that would be it. Your your 12 years would be up for a lifetime. Other than that, that's pretty much all that I have. Unless anyone else has any other suggestions.
If I may.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah, no, thank you. While staff is looking at this, at the survey, you know, as we learned earlier, we have until, you know, sometime in August to submit this item on the ballot, which I support. I would also like for staff to look at, you know, the the structure of the of our mayor's office or our mayor's seat. I know other seats, other cities rotate the major position every two years. So if we just, you know, do a survey of what that looks like. As they bring back the report, that would be beneficial. I appreciate that. And also the same thing to also add our city clerk positions and also our treasurer positions too.
Yeah, I think that's a great. That's a great conversation. We are one of the very few cities that still have an elected mayor. I know a lot of the cities do a rotating mayor and it does, you know, they have a little bit of a different process. I know in the past, before we turned to elected mayors, we did do a voting between the council. If we did a rotating mayor, I think that would be best just to make sure everybody has a set time to be mayor. And how that we can also look at that discussion. I think that's a that's a worthy discussion. So is there any other recommendations?
Just one more thing for Lulu. If we were to propose a 12 years, it would be starting from the time that this would be adopted or passed, if so, by the voters. So everyone's clock would start from the time that this would be adopted.
That's correct, yes.
So just, so just so I understand, Lulu, does that mean, so basically everyone would still be able to serve 12 years as of this point? Regardless of when they served it 10 years, five years ago, whatever the case may be. And come back and serve another 12 years if that's if that's what the voters choose. Is that correct?
If I'm understanding correctly, yeah, first for this doesn't apply for past mayor seats, the council seats, city treasurer, city clerk seats. It's it's at the, it'll count, the clock will start once this is approved, moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Okay. So I think council has some clear direction. So I think the motion would be, and then Councilmember, you can confirm. So I think the motion would be to hold off on the language till we come back with the survey so we could kind of compare our suggestions to what other cities are doing and kind of see in the area. So I don't want to go beyond maybe just the region. Maybe we can also get some random sample points even out of state, see what other states or smaller cities or even bigger cities are doing when it comes to term limits. even out of state, see what other states or smaller cities or even bigger cities are doing when it comes to term limits. So I guess that was my motion, huh? One second.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Damian, please.
No, you can, you can go ahead in a second.
No, it's yours.
Some matter of second.
Okay, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Proten, Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, as long as it goes with the voters, yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that, city clerk. At this point, we do have the Ballin Park Housing Housing Authority Virtual Regular Meeting. So we have a consent calendar. So I'll make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Proten, Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that. And then we have the Ballin Park Finance Authority Virtual Regular Meeting, and I believe we have a consent calendar. And then there's one item, so I'll make a motion to pass that consent counter. Can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Proten, Damian?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, city clerk. So I believe we are going into closed session, but just before that, I know I didn't request it. But I just wanted to clarify, I know that we gave direction to reimagine or expand our services at Morgan Park in the back area that is no longer being used by the Boys and Girls Club. And so I think that we are able to use ARP funds for that. So I do want to do that so that we don't delay it. And we can work parallel on that as we work to engage our community in the downtown. And then I know that we've talked a lot about the air quality in our city. So one thing I've recently learned is that based on the air quality, we are able to partner with organizations to move towards a cleaner energy source. And I think those programs are funded by some of the agencies that have polluted or that cause of pollution in this area. So I would, I would want to explore that as well. And then one last thing is that it is, it is Manny's birthday. So we want to acknowledge that right before St. Patrick's Day. So Manny, you are a Pisces.
Happy birthday, Manny.
It is my birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We don't want to keep you any longer, right? So we'll let you, we'll let you enjoy your day. So happy birthday, Manny. I don't know if any of the council members had any directions that they wanted or any communications that they wanted to share. If not, at this moment, we will.
Mayor, I have a communication.
Oh, yes.
So, so my office will be submitting a letter of support on behalf of the mayor and the city council for AB 2163 authored by Assembly Member Rubio, which will extend the sunset date of the San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority by 20 years, from 2030 to 2050. Just letting you know, I'll be submitting that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Enrique. Great. So if we are all set here, I think we're going back into a closed session. So we will see everybody else at the next meeting and then staff and council will go to closed session. So good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Let me, let me get recording on Granicus first.
Okay, go ahead.
And resume cloud recording.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're live.
All right, city attorney, is there anything to report on?
Yes, Mayor, there is. Our CEO Enrique Zaldear's contract pursuant to section 3.1 required the council to look at his tenure at the city after nine months and determine whether or not he should be increased to step four of his pay scale. Pursuant to that contractual requirement, the council did vote 5-0 to grant that pay raise to section, to step four for our CEO Enrique Zaldivar. The motion was made by Councilmember Monica Garcia. It was seconded by Councilmember Alejandro Avila, and the motion passed 5-0. That is the only final action that was taken, and that was the only reportable action. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you for that, city attorney. At this moment, we have no more business to conduct, and I think we're all done. So I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Good job, Enrique.
Any objections?
Congratulations, Enrique.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
So, so good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Recording stopped.